Again, if there is an item on the agenda that you'd like to speak on, the green and yellow cards are in the back. Please make sure to fill those out and bring them up to the staff here at the roundtable. I would ask, so that we can have some consistency. If you have a group of, let's say, 30 that are speaking on the same item, we would appreciate if you designate a spokesperson or a couple of spokespeople to speak on your behalf. I think the group that is here has a couple spokespeople that hopefully will speak on their behalf. And then what we'll do is instead of giving each person three minutes, we'll give the group 10 minutes to speak. So we're kind of still collecting some of the slips. So if there is a large group here to speak on an item, such as, let's say, I don't know, eight and nine, you can work on putting a spokesperson together for it. We'll get started here in a few minutes. Thanks. I was copying my file over. Okay. Well, good evening and welcome to the May 3 Planning Commission meeting. I'll ask for a roll call.
Chairman Christopher Sippel.
Present.
Vice Chairman Brian Anderson.
Yep.
Commissioner Carl Bloomfield.
Here.
Commissioner David Cavaney.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Froelich.
Here.
Commissioner Brian Johns.
Here.
Commissioner Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Seth Banda. Alternate Commissioner Mary Harris.
Thank you. All right. So we've got some movements, but I'll ask for approval of the agenda. Vice Chair.
Motion, we approve the agenda with the following modifications. Eight, nine to be pulled off consent and moved to...
Yep.
Eight, nine, and 12 to be pulled off consent and moved to non-consent.
That's it. Lynda, did you have any others? We're good? Okay. All right, so the agenda is to move items eight, nine, and 12 off of consent and move them to non-consent. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, communication from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission response is limited to responding to criticism or asking staff to review a matter or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. So this would be if anyone liked to speak on anything that is not on our agenda this evening. Okay? Seeing none. All right, the public hearing consent items. All public, all items listed below are considered consent calendar items and may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of the commission for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar. At this point in time, the consent calendar consists of only item 10, which is UP 17-01, and 11, which is DR 17-01. Item 13, DR 17-1002. 14, which is item, item 14, which is DR 17-005, and item 15, which is DR 17-1006. At this time, I will ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak on those items. Okay? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and call for a motion. We're actually going to do two separate motions because Commissioner Froelich has a conflict, so I'll open it to the vice chair.
Yeah, first, I'll, those conflicts are items 10 and 11.
Thank you.
So I'll motion that we approve items 10 and 11.
Motion's been made by Vice Chair Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bloomfield? Attaboy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Vice Chair.
Motion to approve items 13, 14, and 15. Item 14 has an addendum to it with changes to conditions four and five. Condition four now reads prior to dismissal of construction document a second review. The applicant shall provide planning staff as revised landscape plan reflecting additional landscape requested in the buffer area between the commercial loading dock and the apartment use, as well as the entry, no landscape detail along the west entry to the loading dock. Condition five has been modified to read prior to dismissal of construction document a second review. The applicant shall provide planning staff and revised lighting plan noting exterior building lighting, under canopy can light locations, walls gauze light locations, and landscape lighting, uplighting on the specimen trees as minimal.
Wow. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Vice Chair Anderson, second by Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move to public hearing, non-consent. Non-consent items will be heard at individual public hearings and will be acted upon by the commission on a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing a comment in support or opposition to the public hearing may do so. Again, if you'd like to comment on any of the items that are in the non-consent, please fill out one of the yellow or green cards located in the back, and you may bring them up to the roundtable for staff. And so with that, we will actually start with items... Oh, there she is. Eight and nine. Will we do eight and nine together?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay, so eight and nine are UP 17-1001 and DR 17-1001. Arizona Auto Parts. Ashley, good evening.
Thank you, Chairman Sippel and commission members. As you mentioned, we're going to hear UP 17-01 and DR 17-1001 together. They will require two separate motions when you are ready to make a motion. Just to orient the project, this is located off of Cooper Road, on the east side of Cooper Road, south of Guadalupe Road. This is a portion of the former Chef Steel site. It is a 13.3 acre parcel. Looking at this aerial map, you can see that the existing site does have structures that currently exist. When the applicant is to develop this site, portions of that structure will remain for their use as auto salvage yard, and then the remainder will be removed. These, again, the site is the former Chef Steel site. The northern portion, as you may recall, last year, the Planning Commission did approve Weinberger Transfer Station on the other 10 acres that was once Chef Steel. The site is zoned general industrial and has been since the '70s. So this is one of our heaviest zoning districts, allows a variety of heavy industrial uses. Within that zoning district, certain uses do require additional level of scrutiny, and that's through our conditional use permit process. Auto salvage yards is one of those uses that requires a conditional use permit, and so that's one of the applications before you tonight. The hours of operation for this facility that the applicant has proposed at this time is from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., however, those may be adjusted to meet market demands. And then we are concurrently reviewing the design review application with this. So we'll talk about both of those. Looking at the site plan, this is the overall site, and we'll zoom in as I go through my presentation. But off of Cooper Road, the applicant is going to be performing some improvements to the front of the site. The parking will be located off of Cooper Road with the existing Chef Steel building remaining here. This will be a canopy area where the applicant conducts the depollution of those salvage vehicles before they're placed in the lot, which is back in this area. Zooming in a little bit, the salvage yard will be surrounded by a 10-foot screen wall, which, if you can see my mouse, starts here and then will follow up this way and then connect to the building here with a gate allowing access into that area on this side of the canopy structure and then on the south side of the canopy structure. Looking at the floor plan, the applicant is proposing a new office building underneath the canopy. This is where customers will check in and check out with their parts and pay for those. Underneath the canopy is where the vehicles will have their fluids removed by staff members of the facility. There will be storage of some of the larger parts. The engines and transmissions will occur under here. And then in this area is where the storage of those fluids will be. So there's a tank for the oils and the gases, and those will be picked up by another company on a weekly basis. Looking at landscaping, as you may recall at the study session last month, staff did indicate that the applicant needed to make some changes to their landscape plan and provide perimeter landscaping to meet the land development code. The applicant has done that, so you'll see as I go to this next image, they have provided perimeter landscaping, and this is consistent with the same type of landscaping in the same manner that Weinberger Transfer Station has provided as well. In terms of the building elevations at the study session for the design review, there was a couple of things that staff brought up for discussion, and I want to just quickly cover those. One of those was the articulation of the stucco at the front of the building. The applicant has not made any modifications to this. However, they have provided detail that there is four inches of offset where that stucco, where that stucco is on the frontage. In addition, they do have this canopy that protrudes from the building about four feet. So it does provide some movement in the building. And then one other item that has changed since we came to you at study session, staff wanted to get some input at study session from the commission on the use of wrought iron atop their CMU wall. If you recall, previously, they had six foot of CMU with two feet of wrought iron. And what they have, what they have done in lieu of providing all CMU or providing the two foot of wrought iron is they've proposed four foot of CMU, and then there's B-deck metal, six feet of B-deck metal along the top. Staff is not happy with that change, and we have added conditions within the design review that they receive, or that they submit for review and approval, wall detail that shows a 10-foot CMU wall as opposed to having that B-deck metal. And I do believe the applicant wants to have discussion on that tonight. Looking at the rear elevations, this is what you would see from the rear of the site. This is within the canopy, so behind that wall you would see the structure. And then here, they have removed that wall, just so you can see what it looks like. Again, here is that wall detail. So even along the front that I showed you on the initial site plan where they'll screen their salvage vehicles, they've also added the 10-foot, or the six feet of B-deck metal. And so staff added a condition requiring that be all CMU as well. So again, we'll have some discussion on that tonight. Another item that staff brought up at the Planning Commission study session last month was the integration of the office building into the canopy, and you can see here that the applicant has not made any changes. Just taking a look at the elevations, you can see that they, they have made some improvements to the site from what the existing Chef Steel canopy looks like. You know, they, they do have some movement with those, with the canopy here, and then it does break up the massing with those color changes. Colors and materials, these are consistent with their other facility that they operate. So as a reminder to the Planning Commission with the use permit, we are looking for you to find for the four findings of fact. Those are in your staff report, so I'm not going to read through these, but we are asking you to make the findings a fact, and staff's recommendation is approval of this case. We have added a condition that the salvage vehicles not be stacked in a manner or parked so that they're visible above the 10-foot screen wall with this case. And then the design review case, we have six conditions of approval, and I covered, I covered the screen, the screen wall detail. And then another condition that is not typical of design review cases is that the northernmost access point be gated and serve as emergency traffic only or as emergency access only. There is some concern with the alignment of that driveway and adjacent driveways along Cooper Road. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Initial questions for staff. No? Well, not at this point. Okay. Oh, you do? I'm sorry. Commissioner Bloomfield.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for your presentation. Just wanting to clarify a little bit about the driveway on the north and having that go to... I guess I'm, just want to clarify in my mind how the access between the two projects, between Weinberger and this one, is going to occur and their access off of Cooper, and make sure that that's clear. Because I understand that that main entrance that we see down there is going to be for both of them, and Weinberger has another one to the south. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So that, okay. Do we know what kind of traffic flow we anticipate in and out of this site? Is there an estimation?
I might defer that question to the applicant. I do know that our traffic department did not require them to perform a traffic study. I know you see a lot of parking spaces here, and that's really just a result of the location of the building and them desiring to use that existing canopy structure. I don't think they anticipate filling that parking.
It's, it's existing, and they're just keeping it, is mostly what I'm hearing. Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson, you good?
I think you covered where I was about to go. So the parking's not, it's for this, because it's established. They're not looking at these types of uses, or this type of intensity of use.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. If the applicant is here and would like to make a presentation, you can do so at this time. I'd remind our attorney friends, they have 10 minutes maximum. I won't count setup time.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
We're not counting technical difficulties yet.
Just example of the blue that will be in the...
This is exactly...
Exhibit A.
I promised I pushed the correct button. There we go. No, that's you.
Not going to bite. We could, you have a flash drive?
I do.
Let's do it. We'll just take this out.
Where is your words said?
Maybe we should have come in as... Why is it not coming up? To, shouldn't be on desktop. It should have just popped. Why is it not coming out? Just try this. It's not doing.
I've also got it in paper copy.
It's not doing. We don't want to remove. We might have to go up there. Why is it not coming up? Screen. There you go. Sean, which one?
Those aren't me. That's all. That's you guys.
It's a removal.
There we go.
No, no. It's not reading it.
Can I pull this one?
The other one.
I just bumped up. No? I'm going to do paper.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chair.
Chairman, commission members, I apologize about that. We switched things over here, and we have a new projector, and it's a little different, and we'll get that worked out next time. Sean Lake, 1744 South Val Vista, here on behalf of the property owners in Arizona Auto Parts in connection with this project. We appreciate the opportunity to speak before you and wanted to walk through roughly what we're proposing to do. As you can see, the project that we're proposing is on a piece of property that has been developed for industrial uses for a very long time. I found it interesting to find an old '60s photograph showing that the property that was developed... This is a street view of the, how the property exists today. Recently, the, we approved, or the Planning Commission and Town Council approved on the right half, if you will, the Weinberger Transfer Facility that will be developed and constructed in the next several months. We're here to talk about the left half of that building, of the Chef Steel site, but that's how it exists and what it's pictured today. The property is zoned general industrial, which is the heaviest industrial zoning district in the town of Gilbert and has been for many, many, many years. These are the listed uses that are allowed by right, that are permitted uses. Gilbert has always intended for this heavy industrial to have these heavy uses. There is very few, very little land in the town of Gilbert that is designated general industrial. There's lighter industrial that's more prevalent in the town, but there's very few general industrial zoned lands, and this property has been zoned that for a very, very, very long time and anticipates these heavy intense uses. We've highlighted a few of them, of the uses that are allowed within this zoning district, and we are one of those, those uses. As I indicated, this is also a developed industrial area. This is not just an isolated Chef Steel parcel surrounded by other uses. You've got a lot of heavy industrial uses in the area. Just south of us, we have a steel fabrication facility with SNH Steel. You've got the Gilbert Wastewater Treatment Plant. You've got contractors' yards. You've got auto repair. You've got paint. You've got landscaping materials. You go around this area on the left. We've listed all the industrial uses that are currently located and operating and functioning in this, in this area and have been for some time, as well as the railroad, which bisects the property, bisects this whole industrial park, if you will. Like I said, we are proposing to develop the north, we'll call it the north half of the property for the Arizona Auto Parts facility. A lot of our property runs along parallel with the railroad station, and that's where a lot of the cars will be stored, is back adjacent to the railroad and won't be visible from Cooper Road. The south half of the property was the Weinberger Transfer Facility, which was approved and should start construction here in the next few weeks. This is a copy of the elevations that were approved for the Weinberger south half. As you can see, Weinberger will be going in and doing substantial cleanup along Cooper Road compared to what it was. If you can picture that image of what it looks like today, they'll be cleaning up along Cooper Road and installing landscaping and walls and really cleaning up the Chef Steel canopy. We are then going to be working on that north half, or the left side, the great out portion of that building, with the development of our project. These are some renderings of what we will be doing. In addition to cleaning up the frontage along Cooper with landscaping materials and the improvements that are required and requested by the town, we'll also be cleaning up the facade and the building and pulling down a lot of office buildings. Those of you who have been by the site, I'm sure all of you have many, many, many times, there's a lot of buildings in the front of the canopy. We're going to be removing all of those office buildings and dilapidated old structures and getting rid of those and cleaning up the site and taking it really back to just the steel shade structure. And then incorporating our office building underneath the canopy of that shade structure, so it's a much cleaner, much more attractive appearance. And then placing a parking field for customers that come in the front of the project. Our access, this is from the north side. That access way will be gone. We'll talk about that later. But this is kind of the perspective from the north side. As you get closer to the building, you can see where the office portion of the building will be, and will be tucked in, incorporated underneath the canopy. And we've tried to do that to make it a much cleaner, nicer front and clean up that, create a new parking field and landscaped area in the front of the building, which will be much more attractive as you go up and down Cooper Road. Here's a site plan that's being presented before you. You can see the gray area is that building. As you go, as Ashley indicated, the cars will be stored in the back behind a 10-foot screen wall, and we won't be stacking anything above. So you won't be able to see above, anything above a 10-foot screen wall. So everything will be stored in the back and won't be visible from Cooper Road, and traffic will be coming in and out of the site from the shared drive along the south side, that shared drive with the Weinberger facility. There were discussions about the environmental problems with this user. We contest that. This user is very, has a very good track record working with both local, county, state, and federal agencies. When cars come in, we remove all the fluids, the material, the oils, the freon, everything that is associated with that car are removed. They're put in, they're stored, and then they're taken off-site to other, either sold or recycled. Up to 90% of a car can be recycled. Now, it's interesting. We all love to drive new cars. We all have cars. Everybody uses them. But when we sell it and they're no longer usable or it gets in a wreck and it disappears, we think, well, it just disappears. The problem is, there's a lot on that car that can be reused and should be recycled. That's the sustainable thing of a good citizen should do to reuse those parts of a car that can be reused. We shouldn't always buy new and be a consumptive society. We should try to do this, and that's what they do. They recycle things. But this isn't the traditional junkyard that we think of from the '70s. Cars don't come and stay. Cars come, and they're turned over every 90 days. So things which aren't pulled off of this car or recycled within 90 days, they run it on an inventory. That car is then taken off and hauled off-site and then scrapped. So you don't have the situation where you have a 2014 Buick that comes in and just sits there for the next 50 years. Every 90 days, these cars turn over and then are recycled. So you always have a constant new inventory of parts that can be salvaged and pulled off and reused. Ashley went over the findings that are required. We believe that we have met every one of these findings. Staff concurs with us that we have met every one of these findings. We comply with the general plan. We comply with state, local, and federal requirements. We don't interfere with the use enjoyment of nearby properties because we're right in the center of an heavy industrial park, and we don't, we won't impact the health, safety. We've met with the town as far as roadway and traffic and those type of things. The road. The roadway out on Cooper Road is more than, has more than sufficient capacity to handle this type of use. I talked to the owners who have run this business for almost 100 years here in the state of Arizona and they envision about 100 to 150 cars a day coming to this site. So it's not a heavy user site like you would have with some more other heavy industrial uses that you saw on that list. So we think this is a good reuse of this site. Now let me talk about two conditions that we would like to address. The first is, we've agreed to close off the north drive, but if we can work with the town's traffic engineer to shift or move that driveway so that they will allow us to have it, I want some flexibility in that condition where if the town agrees, we don't have to file a whole new case and come back for a stipulation modification. So what I would request is that we just add to condition number four unless otherwise approved by the town. That way, if the town traffic engineer says, "No, no, no, no," we don't have it. But if the town traffic engineer says, "No, no," well, maybe if you did all of these things, we could be okay with it, then they have the flexibility without having to go through a whole rezoning case, or not a rezoning, a whole site plan modification case to revise a stip. So we would ask for that one. The second one is the perimeter fence that goes around the site. What we are proposing, it's a 10-foot solid wall that you can't see through. We're a little concerned about doing a 10-foot masonry wall. We are proposing a 4-foot masonry wall with 6-foot of metal decking above it. Now, I brought a sample here, but another good example of metal decking and how it's used and how it can be attractively architecturally incorporated into a project would be the lobby area of the town of Gilbert, which has metal decking that is exposed if you look out in the lobby. If you also look at the town over on the southwest corner, the town has a fence that is a metal decking fence that is used. In addition, the metal walkway leading into this town hall has metal decking that's exposed on the underside of the walkway. We think it's a good alternative material. It breaks up a 10-foot masonry wall, provides multiple materials, so that wall that goes around the perimeter can have multiple movements and architectural features. I'm not a guy, my wife picked out my clothes, I'm just restating things that I hear from architects, but I'm here to tell you, we think it's a good use, we think it's a matter of opinion, to be quite honest with you. We think it's attractive, obviously the town thinks it's attractive, otherwise they wouldn't have incorporated it into town hall. We think it's a good alternative use and so we would ask you to modify condition 5A and B so that we can allow or have the flexibility to have that metal decking incorporated into that 10-foot wall. I heard the buzzer go off, so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions or be prepared for a follow-up and response comments.
A real quick question before I ask my fellow commissioners, are you painting the decking?
Right now, we're showing galvanized or we can paint it.
Okay. All right. Questions from the commission at this point? Go ahead, Commissioner Johns?
Oh, I just had a quick question on the, on the, how they separate the cars. What type of equipment do they use? Is it all hand tools or is it actual large machinery that pulls the cars, get the individual parts from the car?
That's an operational question, Chairman, Commissioner, what they do when a car is brought to the site, they'll pull off the parts that they need and then we'll store those underneath the canopy on racks and then take it out to the yard. And sometimes they're drivable, sometimes they're, you tow them, sometimes you have to lift them and get them to their spot depending upon the damage and what's salvageable. Then they sit in the yard and for example, you may say, my example, I have a 94 Chevy pickup truck and I borrowed to a guy and one of the back windows broke out. Well, you can't go buy a 94 Chevy pickup window. So I would call up these guys or go on their computer and say, "I need a back rear quarter window for a 94 Chevy pickup." And they'd look it up and say, "Okay, we have one of those in space 37, 132, 27 and 232. Take your pick, go out and see if it's there and take it off yourself." And so then they would just, the person would go out, take it off themselves, come up and pay for it.
So it's like a traditional pick and pull, kind of like from, I've seen in other operations?
Correct.
And then, so they pull what they, like the engine transmission, larger items, a user won't be pulling like a window of their own, but they'll be doing those under the canopy?
Both.
No, I know the user would be doing it onsite, but when they bring it on, it gets brought in from a truck, it's brought under the canopy to, and the analysis of what they think is to be pulled off of it is done under the canopy?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I guess, well, I'll give to, I got a question on staff for the north driveway.
Commissioner Johns?
Thank you. I totally understand that a lot of this is, you know, used by right on, but I think a lot of people here are concerned about the, you know, how it's going to affect them on their... So I guess the visibility is probably one of the, going to be the larger issues. And then maybe, this is more of a question for staff, the other question I have is, I understand the stacks can't be above the wall, but how about the equipment that's taking care of it, the cranes, the, any kind of the forklifts or anything along that line? Is that by use for this kind of zoning? I mean, is that allowed in there or is that something that we're going to try to take in consideration, working hours or things along that line? So going back to the visibility, across the neighborhood, there's two-story buildings. They're going to be looking back down in here, 10-foot wall, we're allowed to stack up to that point. So are they going to see back up into the yard? Is there enough landscaping appropriate to take care of that? Do we have enough height? So maybe if we had a line of sight to kind of get an idea of what we're looking at here, that might be helpful for the staff and the public to say, "Yeah, with 10-foot wall, you're not going to see anything being that distance away because this is way back from the road." And just looking at the site plan, it's hard to read. So I'm kind of putting a statement and a question out there together, my apologies, but...
Chairman, Commissioner Johns, let me address that real quick. First off, we will have the 10-foot solid screen wall fence that will go around the property, so you won't be able to see anything and we won't be stacking anything above that fence. Now, are we going to have loaders and forklifts and those type that are going to rise above a lineal or a vertical 10-foot? Of course. But, I mean, that's the nature of a heavy industrial use. Currently, right now, Chef Steel has been operating out there totally open and so there is no restriction. So we've had much heavier uses out in that area that have been operating for 60 years with heavy equipment. So we think, we have to weigh, you know, trying to screen it, but also understanding that this is a heavy industrial area. As far as the distance goes, the building's several hundred feet back from the right-of-way, plus you have quite a bit. So by the time you get back into the yard or outside that canopy, I mean, you're going to be a football field and a half to two football fields away. And from a perspective standpoint, somebody standing in their backyard, either on the west side, you're going to be quite a distance away. You can see it now, but you're, we're going to be adding a 10-foot screen wall that doesn't exist now.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess by looking at it on the scale of the drawings, it's just, it's hard to get that scale of how far away it is and I appreciate you clarifying that.
Thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Cavney?
So just to help me understand the applicant's concern, obviously it was expressed that a solid 10-foot masonry wall is a concern. Is it, is it just the plainness of it? Is it the cost of it? Is it the, what is the concern?
It's the plainness of it.
Okay. And last time, we talked about what Weinberger has done to accent their wall and that included coursing, horizontal coursing, that included, I think it was either split face or it was set back or recessed or painted. So we thought that that was an option to consider. I'm not sure how this would look, I'm trying to envision it. It couldn't end up being extremely creative, it couldn't end up looking a little maybe too plain or too industrial, I'm not sure. But I don't know, I kind of, I kind of like the solid masonry with accent, of course, and if it were me, I'd probably consider like a split face course or two just to kind of break it up a little bit, maybe a stained or painted color. But yeah, I think I prefer the solid masonry versus introducing this different material that I don't really see anywhere else on the site or the building. That's just my preference at this point, so...
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Vice Chair?
I believe earlier in your presentation, you made a comment that, correct me if I'm, once they're up and operating, they'll bring in 150 cars a day or is it 150 cars a week?
A day.
A day, okay. So a year from now, when they're in full operation, they're bringing in 150 cars a day, how many cars would be leaving this site? Would it be 150 coming on, 150 leaving?
Now, now, let me clarify, we're not bringing 150 salvage cars a day. That's not what I meant. I mean, people who are coming to this site, both in cars being brought and customers, a total of about 150 cars a day, 100 to 150 cars a day between all of the above.
Okay, so it's not 150 salvageable cars?
No, no, it's not 150 new salvageable cars a day, no, no, no.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
All right. Thank you.
Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bloomfield?
I have one question. It's in regards to the landscape plan that's here. And when I see, I know the association between Weinberger and this site, especially out in the back, it really is just a line that was drawn in there, it was one parcel at one point, it's been split for this purpose, but we have landscaping going all the way around that fence. I'm not sure that it makes sense to have trees planted back there along that common, now common property with Weinberger, is that going to be an issue? How does it look back there? We just don't, I don't recall how Weinberger is addressing their perimeter in the back and if it doesn't make sense to put that landscaping in there, it's going to be in a blind alley and a blind spot, why put it in?
Chairman, Commissioner Bloomfield, we appreciate the comment and we know it was raised at the study session about why are you putting this landscaping between a Weinberger who's going to have loaders moving construction debris, you know, all day and loading it into big semi trucks all day? And you're going to have all that, what's the likelihood of that landscaping surviving back there? Not real great. And then you're putting landscaping on our side where we're just going to have cars sitting there and what's the likelihood of it? Who is it benefiting? We don't, we don't know, but that is something we did raise with staff after the study session, we appreciate it being brought up. And staff has said they're willing to work with us to see if there's something we can do within the frameworks of the code. Right now, we don't have a solution for it, but if something can be resolved between now and building permit, we'll work that out then. Now, that doesn't change, that's only the sides.
Right.
As far as the front, we remain committed to relan, or not re, putting landscaping in the front along Cooper Road that currently doesn't exist and that, what I said would not change, it would only enhance that area up front.
Yeah, currently it has desert landscaping, it looks like the desert out there and so...
Well, the desert has some plans.
That's true, that's true. But perhaps, perhaps we just heavy up on that front where it does make a difference and it could, and it could potentially add to the attractiveness of it rather than putting it in the back where you're surrounded by all of the industrial. I don't know if staff is, is... Open to that, but, but I think that that, personally, I think that that makes a lot more sense than, than having trees back in and around where it's not going to do much...
We're really excited about this because you have two users that have come to the town who are willing to make these changes and additions. I mean, you have an existing zone site with improvements on site on the north side that's, that has water, that has sewer, that has all these connections where somebody could move in tomorrow and just open up shop and run a business. But instead, you have Weinberger to the south who came to the town and said, "We want to make some changes and really clean this area up and landscape it." And you have Arizona Auto who's saying, come to the town and said, "We want to make these changes and clean up along the front." There are uses out there that are on that list that don't have to. They could, you know, if Arizona Auto goes away, you could have another use that comes in, moves into the office building and just opens up shop tomorrow. And we don't see anything done along the perimeter or along Cooper Road. We're excited. It's going to clean this frontage up substantially, it's going to be, look very nice and very attractive and hopefully others along, in this industrial corridor follow suit and make some changes and make it look nicer along Cooper.
It inevitably will, so, thank you. I do have one further question because my, I grew up in Eager, Arizona, and when I went to the junkyard, it's owned by the Dirt Brothers. And there's a reason why I was owned by the Dirt Brothers, they looked like that, so... But my, but curious for this one, it seems like a clean operation, everything's contained underneath, I believe probably because of industrial requirement or environmental requirements from DEQ for stormwater pollution, et cetera. Is that correct? And everything is, we don't expect any spills and a leaky, messy ground outside when we're all done with this project, right?
Correct, and I appreciate you bringing this up. The operators have been operating this family business for almost 100 years, they are clean, they are well, you know, they run a clean shop. I went out to their other shop that they have in Phoenix and it's very well maintained and taken care of. It is not Sanford and Sons, not to disparage the 70's sitcom, but that's not what we're talking about or the junkyards you saw in Starskin Hutch. I mean, this is a clean operation that is regulated by multiple governmental entities and they comply with. Not only that, they have third-party inspectors that they hire to come in to make sure they're doing everything that they're supposed to be doing. So in addition to regular reporting to both, to all the county, state and federal agencies, they also have voluntary inspections by, hired to come in to tell them if they're doing everything right and then they submit those. And so they're, they're very well regulated and they are also voluntarily paying people to make sure that they do stay in compliance.
Thank you. All right. Very good. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. I don't see a spokesperson for groups, so we're gonna, here's how we're going to run this. If each one of you takes your three minutes, we'll be here for about three hours, which is fine, we're welcome to be here for three hours. I would encourage you that, I'm going to go in the order in which I received them. After the initial person talks, if, when we get to your name, oh, now we'll be here for three hours and three minutes. If you have anything new to add, I would encourage you to come up. We'd ask that you not repeat similar things over and over and over again. So with that, I have Patty Mills. Patty, if you want to come up. You pushed, you put on your form you wish to speak, you did not put if you're in favor or opposed. So when you come up, if you could just state your name, town of residence, and then you'll have your three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for letting us speak our voice. I'm Patty Daly Mills, I live in the Silverhawk community and I'm opposed to the salvage yard. I have some insider information that would like to remain anonymous as to operations of salvage yards. I've given you all, we presented pictures, did you all have...
And we do, we do, we did get the packet with the signatures as well, thank you.
Okay, very good. We have an additional 30 signatures, so we're now up to over 130 signatures against the salvage yard. And those signatures also include some of the local businesses that surround the area in question. Pretty is nice, doesn't always make a good fit. I'm here on behalf of Silverhawk, Sonesta, Cayman Square, Summer Meadows, Stonehenge and I believe a couple of other areas that are within half a mile to three-quarters of a mile area. It's my understanding that as the zoning committee, planning and zoning, that you have issues. Number one on the list is the health, safety and welfare of those people that are in the surrounding area. Our neighborhoods are concerned with the health of our families, should any enterprise be allowed to move in in the former Chef Building that uses, stores, produces or sells hazardous materials in the form of cleansers, solvents, fuels, oils, other solids, liquids or gases such as Freon that could be considered poisonous in any state and form? such as Freon, that could be considered poisonous in any state and form. For instance, there is also mercury. Mercury exists in every relay switch in a car. If you push your trunk open and the light comes on, mercury is involved. We have discussed oil and gasoline and that kind of stuff. Mercury, as we all know, is pretty detrimental to our environment. We're concerned, seriously concerned about a fire. As you know, we've had a couple of fires in that area. Smoke from the burning items will contaminate the air, the water, and the ground, not only on the exact property, but in the surrounding areas in the community. And many of our families already have health issues, such as asthma, bronchitis, allergies, and are confined in their activity levels. Wheelchairs and mobility is due to illness or other physical issues could make it impossible for a speedy departure. We are curious if they have an evacuation plan, an emergency evacuation plan in the event of a serious hazardous spill, or if a fire occurs with the rubber tires. In sitting down with Mr. Lake's numbers, gosh, it's my understanding that they're gonna store 13,500 vehicles there? That's 24,000 tires. The neighborhood is also concerned with the safety of our families, because this will be a business that's open to the public, with a varied element of people who can come into our neighborhoods, go by our schools, drive through the residential, residential areas where there are children at play, where stay-at-home wives and mothers involved in activities that will expose them to strangers. These days, the public, all of us, are at risk every day and everywhere, but we attempt not to put ourselves and our families at risk when possible. Home is supposed to be our safe haven. There are no mandatory controls in place to prevent any enterprise from hiring predators, or this particular enterprise, from hiring predators, drug addicts, illegal aliens, other, and any other felons that could endanger the people who live and work in the area. So, our safety is in question. In view of the above concerns, our general welfare of the area is in question. Welfare, as described in the dictionary, is being that of health, happiness, and fortune of persons or a group. And in allowing a salvage yard or a trash facility, or AKA a recycling facility, we see no procedures or efforts designed to promote the basic physical and material well-being of those of us in the area. Mr. Lake mentioned that they were hooking up to sewer. It's my understanding they are not going to hook up to city sewer, they are going to place a new septic tank. And we're also curious about fire hydrants, existing fire hydrants. Will there be additional fire hydrants? In addition, property values, if you go in and you look it up, and I've talked to some appraisers, our property values of our homes, and even some of the other local businesses, could be devalued by 7%. I didn't buy a $350,000 home to find out now it's gonna be worth far less. Other concerns, hazardous materials. Anaphryz oil, flammable fuels, battery acid, rubber materials, mercury, and glass. We want to make sure that they're properly destroyed and removed from the property. Mr. Lake covered that somewhat and said that they are always controlled and that they pay people to come in and monitor that. We have questions about that. We're concerned about the riparian sanctuary, which is less than 500 feet away from what Chef Steel is going to be doing. It's right there by the firehouse, and it's a natural wildlife area. Is it going to be, is there gonna be destruction? Is there gonna be issues with the birds and the wildlife that are currently there as a result of the noise and the lighting and the daily activities? We are definitely concerned about hours of operation. They're saying they want to operate from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. All the other operations, their operations, are from 8:00 to 5:00. They want to operate seven days a week. There are neighbors in Sonesta that are just a hair over 300 feet away from this operation. Now, they're telling us that when we're sitting in our backyards, having picnics, we may have to listen to car crushers, cranes, forklifts, watch tow trucks come in and out, and God only knows what other kind of heavy equipment. So, we're definitely concerned about that. We don't think they should be operating but Monday through Friday, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. or, I'm sorry, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with no activities between those hours. From 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., there should be no other activity. We're hoping not to have to look at cranes and other vehicles over their 10-foot wall, which now they don't even want to do the wall. So, those are basically our main concerns. I mean, we really are concerned about our safety, our health, our welfare. We are concerned about hazardous materials. We are concerned about the businesses that are already there and the riparian group. We've only had eight days, we've had only eight days to put our opposition together. We all found out about this on April the 21st. I realize that they say that they have given us plenty of notice, but we in the area don't seem to have gotten any of that notice, including their public hearing sign doesn't even be, with all construction there, which I'm sure you're aware of, you can't read the public hearings on. So, with all of this done, we truly oppose it. We hope this salvage yard will not be allowed to come in. Pretty is nice, they have all their pictures about how it's gonna look, but what about the operation and how it's going to affect the 6,000 residents that are there? Forty years ago, when it was industrial zoned, those people weren't there, but times change. Forty years, it's brought a lot of change today, and 40 years from today will bring a lot of change tomorrow. If there's anything else that I can do to explain our opposition, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Patty, thank you. Staff is, are there working?
Chairman, the speaker had three minutes. The red light went off at 3:00, she spoke an additional 5:00, she took eight minutes.
Okay.
So, we now put the beep on, so it will go off at 3:00 minutes. And Chairman?
Thank you.
You have the purview also to have all speakers go two minutes if you feel like things could be moved, moved along.
Okay, well, Patty, you did a great job. I hope that when I go through these names, they'll feel like you've addressed their concerns as well. The next person I have is Joe Bakas. It says, "I am opposed to this item and wish to speak." Joe, when you come up, if you could give us your name and city of residence, and that little box on the corner will keep your time board free, thank you. And I'd ask again if you could just add additional things that Patty did not. Thank you.
I'm Joe Bakas. I represent, I'm a resident of Silverhawk. It's 515 homes at the northeast corner of Cooper and Potloupe. We've just learned this proposal on April 17th through a mailing to our homeowners' association, and then we disseminated it to our residents. I went looking for the sign that was supposed to give us public notice, and I found the sign that is required by the town. It appears to be the right dimensions, but it's more than 136 feet off of the main road. It doesn't meet the town's criteria for the placement of the sign. It's actually supposed to be within 25 feet of the road with the construction there, and all of the traffic moved to the west. It's about 136 feet from the road. And if you, if you're really looking for the sign, it's set behind a wall in the retention basin, that you'd have to actually pass this wall and look backward, because it's recessed so far from the street. It's 96 feet from the street itself. The residents of our homeowners' association have expressed concerns about the length of time, the notification period, we weren't aware of what was going on. We were very concerned about the time to assess what's being done, the plans we've seen tonight, at the first opportunity we've had to see what the applicant is intending for the site. It looks to be very well thought out, but we do have concerns about hazardous materials. We do have concerns about the current contamination from the Superfund for the Cooper and Commerce that's being monitored. The feasibility study on that one will not be even completed until June. A spill or something else happening in that area could create a problem, and we don't know how they're gonna deal with their fluids and containment of those fluids, should they have a spill or a fire, which would increase the volume of water in that area and send it back to the water table. I don't know if they're gonna have some kind of special containment, but again, we don't, we have enough information or time to address it. I would ask that any of the board members that haven't been to an auto-recycling or reuse facility, please visit one. I visited two within the time period here. I found them to be less than desirable from a noise and aesthetic standpoint. Also, the situation with the parts being stored there, the tires, a fire in that kind of facility could just create havoc for the entire area. The most important thing we'd ask at this point as a residents is that you consider a continuation of this applicant, so that we can have time to properly assess it and come back to you with our real concerns or whatever contingencies we'd like to see about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Good, Joe, you did a great job of adding all new stuff and keeping it in the timeframe, so thank you for being the example. No, we're, I think we're good. Thanks, Joe. The next person is John, and I apologize if I say your last name wrong. Is it, is it Weemore? It says you wish to speak, but it does not say if you're in favor or opposed. So, John, if you are here... Oh, it's 17 and 18. John, I'm sorry, I'll, we'll get back to you on that one, bud. Sorry about that. All right. So, Joanne Carloni, apologize again on the last name. It says, "I am opposed to this item and wish to speak." So, if you want to just come on up, state your name and town of residence. Again, I apologize for butchering your name.
Do I need to start?
It'll start, yeah.
Okay, well, my name is Joanne Carloni. My husband Greg is over there. We are longtime residents of the Silverhawk neighborhood. We built our home there in 1990. We signed a contract. We have been residents of the community for 21 years. All good experience so far, with the exception of some noise from Chef Steel that we were very happy to have go away. But now, in listening to the presentation by the applicant's representative, it sounds like we're going to be experiencing some of that again. My major concern as a resident, longtime resident of that corner of Gilbert, is that, you know, we've lived with the construction now since November, which we anticipate living with until November. It's inconvenient, it's not safe, there are accidents at that corner all the time, there's always police activity around there, at least from my experience, I've driven by fender benders. I think adding a flow of 150 cars at least per day, when there haven't been any types of studies done, or any types of estimates of actually what the traffic, additional traffic might cause in terms of impact for the residents who use those roads. The alternatives for us are Gilbert Road, which is congested. We were almost late to this meeting, trying to get here tonight because of the congestion on Gilbert Road. Cooper's gonna be just as busy if we add an additional flow of big trucks hauling away cars and equipment being brought in. I think we just deserve to know exactly what their plans are and what their estimates are of the impact on traffic in our area, and safety for the drivers in our area as well. Because there will be people coming in, trying to navigate to the facility who aren't familiar with our homes and our area, and it could cause additional difficulties for those of us who have lived there for 20 years. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll move on to Nancy Plumpton. Hopefully, I said that right. Nancy, name and town, town of residence, please. It says, "I'm opposed and wish to speak."
Thank you. My name's Nancy Plimpton. I'm a resident of Gilbert. Actually, I live in the Silverhawk subdivision. I agree with everything that's been said so far, just a few other points to talk about related to groundwater contamination. They talk about there being a place where everything's going to be gathered. When the vehicles are coming in initially, before they process them, what's going to prevent oil and contaminants from leaking from them before they're actually processed? Also, we've been told they won't be stacking cars, but there's pictures on their website from their west-side facility where they have the racking of the parts, which will be under that canopy, which will be visible above the 10-foot wall. So, again, I think we're still going to have things that are visible above the perimeter wall. We've talked about traffic coming into the area, but also potentially a target for crime. There's people coming in that may be wanting to steal parts, and that could expand out to other neighborhoods. Storing cars in law also could lead to animal infestation, like rats, that could go to the surrounding neighborhoods. And again, they're only creating, I believe they've said 25 jobs. So, again, a question I would have to the commission is, if you were living in one of the communities nearby, could you say to yourself that this is not gonna impact my quality of life, and it's not a hindrance or a detriment to my life and my home, if you lived in one of our communities? Thank you.
Thank you for the additional information. Next, we'll have Gary Fell. Gary, if you want to come on up, is opposed to the item and wishes to speak. Just name and town of residence, please. Thank you.
Good evening, board and everybody here. My name is Gary Fell. I live in Sonesta Estates. I haven't been living here too long, about five months, moved on up to the east side from the west side. And I love my new home there in Sonesta Estates. I'm on the board for that HOA. My main concern is, any of you people that ever say, "Play golf at the Copapele Golf Course," right down the road. Well, when you're playing golf there, you look at the huge salvage yard from the golf course, and you see vehicles stacked up about, I'd say, at least 20 feet in the air, maybe 25 feet in the air. And that's a big eyesore. So, that's one of my concerns. Another concern is, they talked about, if the figure is right, about 13,500 vehicles that are gonna be at the salvage yard. Well, if they're moving vehicles every 90 days, and the vehicle can't stay there over 90 days, well, to me, the math, if I'm wrong with the math, every month, there's gonna be 4,000 to 5,000 vehicles that are gonna be moved out of the lot, sold and transported someplace. That's a lot of heavy moving of these vehicles and big trucks coming in to get 5,000 vehicles moved per month out of this salvage yard. And so, that's another reason why I'm opposed to it. Not only that, I didn't like the wording on the times that they would like to stay open. It seems like it gave it to them that if the business is really going full bore, and they're getting a lot of activity, and they want to stay open more hours, or they want to stay open on Sunday, it's open to what they want to do. And I think the board needs to, you know, address that issue. And that's about all I have, and I think those are some major concerns. And yes, I'm not interested in having my new home that I just bought four months ago go down in value by 7% or 10% because of the additional noise and activity over there. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Scott, I can't read it very well, Lewins, thank you. If you could, name and town of residence, he's opposed to the item and wishes to speak.
I'm Scott Lewins. I live in Sonesta Estates. Just a couple of things that I wanted to add to it. First of all, when we were going over the Weinberger facility, and we found out when we were outvoted essentially in that facility, I told my wife at that point, "Well, you know, at least it's not a junkyard going in there." So, yeah, on top of that, just a couple of clarifications.
Scott, can I have you move a little bit closer to the mic?
Just a couple of clarifications that I would like to know. He mentioned, Mr. Lake, mentioned that the, that there would be no cars stacked above that 10-foot fence. And again, I saw on the website also that they have racks holding transmissions and whatnot. I want to be clear that there's zero above that 10-foot fence line. So, nothing visible essentially from the road, or from any house essentially, from a Sonesta side, from across the street. I also would like to clarify whether or not, they talked about the roof structure is gonna remain where Chef Steel is at. That's not really an improvement to the area, that's a dilapidated, ugly, rusted, you know, roof. If they're gonna move in there, we'd like... roof and if they're going to move in there, we'd like to see that improved as well. Regarding the, the fence line or the masonry wall, I think masonry would probably be a better look to it. They can maybe perhaps soften it considering there's such a large amount of homes and neighborhoods near there. Maybe they could put some trellis or some kind of trellis with some plant work or something along that fence line to kind of soften that line a little bit, to make it a little more visually appeasing. And I just wanted to be, to find out whether or not they're going to be doing some car crushing on site. I hadn't heard if anybody's mentioned that yet or not. And again, that, my final thing is basically that, just love to reiterate that, you know, when they developed this property 40 years ago, there weren't any houses and we understand that it is a zoned residential or zoned commercial, industrial, heavy industrial area. However, we would like an improvement to that area from Chef Steel. We don't want to have Mr. Lake compare it to Chef since, "Hey, we're better than Chef" because that's not really saying much. So, that's about it.
Thank you, Scott. The last few items I have here is, I have David Cafroy. He says he's opposed to the item, but did not check anyone to speak, so David, I've got you down as opposed to the item on the record. The other one I have is Susan, I can't pronounce your name very well, Parvisa, thank you. It says, "Opposed to the item." The question is regarding, it says, "Where?" And would like to speak, okay, Susan, come on up, name and town of residence, please. Thank you. Apologize on the last name, Susan.